Good evening and welcome to the December 6th meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Millis, Massachusetts. This evening, we have a number of fun things on the agenda, as well as the normal duties. I'm going to go through a couple of announcements first, and then we'll get into some fun stuff, okay? First, we have an announcement of upcoming holiday hours for the transfer station. This is online, if I'm not mistaken, I've seen it. But let me just tell you, it'll be open Friday, December 24th, from 8:00 to 11:00, and 12:00 to 3:30. Close Saturday, the 25th. I can't understand why. It'll be open Friday, the 31st, from 8:00 to 11:00, and 12:00 to 3:30, but close Saturday, January 1st. Okay? And this is all online at the millism.gov site. Okay. I don't think there was anything else there, but we do have a big announcement this evening. We have with us this evening the Millis soccer team, boys' soccer team, I should say, the men's soccer team.
Sure.
Is that the best way to say it?
Barstey Soccer, yes.
We have them here so that we can honor them for the outstanding performance they accomplished this year. So on that note, I'm going to let a particular individual who has some more knowledge of this than do I to talk with you and give you some insight as to why we wanted to congratulate you. So please, Ms. Karen Buray.
So first of all, welcome, guys. It's great to see you here again, or see you here. I have to see you on the field all season. We just wanted to bring you in, to honor you for, like Mr. Jermaine said, an unbelievable season. And I just wanted to read some of the things that you accomplished this year. So, let's see. To start with, the team's record was 12, 6, and 3. This is the best record in school history for the Barstey Boys Soccer Team. The team was also the Tri-Valley League Small School Division Co-Champions, again, the first time in school history. They were ranked number 2 out of 80 teams in the state for Division 5, another school record. And they made it all the way to the Elite 8 in the state tournament. Additionally, we have captains Anthony Coots, where's Anthony? There he is. Anthony Coots and Ben Pudelka, who's right here, were both named to the Tri-Valley League All-Stars. This is Anthony's third year being named to the All-Stars. So that's quite an accomplishment. Anthony was also named to the Eastern Mass All-Star for the second time. Yay, Anthony. And then coaches Jason O'Brien and Coach Reg Wilcox were recognized. I believe it was Jason who got Tri-Valley Coach of the Year, and also the Eastern Mass All-Star. So even the coaches got recognition.
That's great.
Beyond that, I would just like to point out that of the 19 members on this team roster, 7 made the honor roll, 6 made high honors. So 13 out of 19 of these boys not only played sports and had a lot of other things, because I know a lot of them and we're very busy, but managed to keep up their grades as well at a very impressive level. And I had the pleasure of getting to go to a lot of the games, which is pretty awesome, and really enjoyed it. I think you are a team that would make the residents of Millis very proud. The teamwork, the professional way you handled things. I saw kids, I saw team members, if someone was fouled, helping the other team up, all kinds of different things. And I think they truly embodied teamwork, and that's really why they're here. And I would just like to say also that if you guys, has anyone seen Ted Lasso? All right. So Ted Lasso is on Apple TV. It's about soccer, and it's a fantastic show. And Ted Lasso had a quote that said, "The harder you work, the luckier you get." And I think that is very true of this team. I've never seen a team work so hard or gel so well as you guys did. So you're here, and we're proud as Millis residents, and certainly as a parent of someone on the team. I feel very fortunate, but I thank you for a wonderful season.
Well, I can't top what Karen said, but you do make your own luck. And I'm going to say something that I've heard Karen say several times, which is, you may not have been the strongest team out there, but you played as a team. And that is something that you ought to be commending each other with, because it's as a team you succeeded in winning, not just as individual players. And the fact that you mixed academics with athletics is the other piece of it. That you can't forget that you are still in school, and that's another part of what's going on. But to see a team that's basically almost all on honors of one form or another is quite impressive. So you all ought to be pretty proud of yourselves, not just as a team, and not for what you just accomplished, but in the way you worked to get it. And I think that's superb. Anyway, those are my comments. Now I'll pass it off to my colleague here.
I just want to congratulate you guys. It takes a lot of work, a lot of practice, a lot of time. And as Mr. Jermaine said, to keep your grades up amongst all that is amazing. And for what you guys have done in terms of, you know, you've had accomplishments that are the best record or the first time in school history, that's pretty awesome. So congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work. It really is something that can give everyone in town something to be proud of. So, thank you.
And just a brief comment. I did have the opportunity to go to your final game, which really demonstrated, I think, your teamwork, your hard work, and really the sense that you all put your heart into this and worked as a team. And you were very impressive out there, and it was great to see. It's a great job.
Well, all I can say is Millis is very proud of you. And I could personally say I am, but I think everybody at this table has acknowledged what a great job you did, so you ought to be very pleased with yourselves. And it's just terrific. Keep it up, and remember this. It's something that you should take with you for the rest of your lives. And all the best to you. Thank you very much.
Can we take a quick picture with you, too?
If you would like.
I was asked by several of the parents to take a quick picture, so blame your parents for this. If you guys want to come up and stand up in front of here, we will take a quick picture.
Karen?
Oh, sure. Well, specifically blame a certain Mrs. Coots for this. That would be you. Karen and Pete, I think you are the short ones. You have to come to the drawing room. We like getting to do these things. I've watched a lot of sports in my life at this point, and I have rarely seen a team that gels like you guys did. So really, you're a very good example. Awesome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming. You're welcome to stay the rest of the meeting if anyone wants to hang out.
Thank you for having us, guys.
Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. No problem. Thank you for coming. See you tomorrow night. Something more? Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. All right, moving on.
Okay. Onto other items. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Conservation Committee member. And I've just got to dig that up, so I'll give you a moment here. We have, is Jim Letterer here this evening? No, okay.
No.
We have, from the Conservation Commission, the recommendation for appointment of Mr. David Larson to become a member of the Conservation Commission. David is an engineer by trade and brings a number of credentials to this committee that otherwise would be very useful. So is there anyone here who wants to speak to this for the Conservation Commission?
They have a meeting tonight.
Yeah, they're in the middle of a meeting right now.
Are they?
Yeah.
Mike, one of the candidates may have to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, that's Mr. Larson.
Oh, that's Mr. Larson.
If you have any questions.
You can come up.
Please, come up. Come up.
Once he's appointed, you're getting sworn in, and then you can go over and vote, correct?
That's what I was told.
That was the plan.
Sort of not jumping the gun, but they said if approved, I'd go downstairs.
Fair enough.
Do you have any questions?
No, I think I'm happy for the opportunity to serve. I've had some experience as a project manager with a Corps of Engineers directing interdisciplinary teams for which, you know, biologists and geologists and other ifs were involved. And we always had to be concerned with wetlands protection and Clean Water Act and the like. And so the state and the town statutes have to be watched over. And I'll do my best to get up to speed on the various properties that the Conservation Commission oversees and the issues that are ongoing here at the town. I'm new to town since early last spring.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome for sure.
Corps of Engineers is near and dear to my heart. That's where I was, but in the military side. So.
Very good.
Very happy to see people who have been working with them. I was obviously proud of working in there. And a little different circumstances, but even so. Well, are there any other questions, comments? Then I'll take a motion.
I move that we appoint Mr. David Larson to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that. I've been moved and seconded to appoint Mr. David Larson to the Conservation Commission. I'll poll the board. Mr. Jermaine, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So Ms. Underhill is a yes. And therefore, it's unanimous, and you are hereby appointed at the recommendation of the Conservation Commission. So welcome aboard, and thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you very much, folks.
And that should give you time to get downstairs and get sworn in.
And we'll make haste.
Are you going to be sworn in without the notice of appointment, I think?
Oh, maybe not, but.
We usually have to draw that up.
I don't know. Camille had set something up.
Okay.
She has indeed given instructions to go see the clerk.
Should be all set.
If it wasn't Camille Stanley, I would be nervous, but Camille knows her stuff.
It doesn't surprise me. Camille is normally right on top of things.
She is.
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Just, so you can, you second? You don't need to pull the board because you're in person?
Ah, of course.
You can if you want.
Or so you're saying, you're welcome to pull the board, but you don't need to, because here we are.
I've been dealing with Zoom for so long. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a review of the, an approval of the American Rescue Plan. And Carol Johnston, our Director of Finance, is going to apprise us of what's going on here.
I believe you received in your packet the, I'm going to take this off just to do. I believe you received in your packet the ARPA grant agreement that needs to be signed by the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, excuse me. To be, we need that in order to do our initial application. It has to be uploaded with that, to the county for that portion of the funds for the ARPA. Again, that's American Rescue Plan Act. That's the funding that we're going for. We, the funding was given in two allotments, one by, to the Treasury, to the state. And that's $800,000. We've received half of that, $400,000. The county received $1.6 million, and they'll be dispersing that in 25% increments. And we'll have to do quarterly reporting of the progress of the project to the county. But anyway, the agreement that you, or the grant agreement you have before you is what needs to be signed for us to do the initial application tomorrow.
Very good. Well, I guess, Mr. Kuzinski, do you have any comments on this?
I think the Finance Director summarized it well. This is the system that's been set up by the county as part of the ARPA grant program. A certain amount of those funds are distributed through the county, and all the communities within Norfolk County are going through the same process as we are in order to sign this agreement to then have access to the funds. So as soon as that happens, we will be able to start putting in for payments based on related costs for the ARPA grant.
Sounds good. Ms. Underhill, do you have any comments?
I do not have any comments.
Then I'll take a motion to approve the agreement.
Okay. I move that we approve and sign the agreement.
I'll second that. It's a move and seconded to approve and sign the agreement. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Therefore, carries unanimously. We will sign the agreement as soon as it's placed before us.
I think you have a copy?
Is it, I was just going to say, is it Select Board that signs? Or are they authorizing Mike to sign, Carol? I'm sorry. Oh, no, it's Select Board.
Yeah, it's the Board. The Board has to sign.
I do have it, so you can actually sign before you leave.
That's fine. We will sign it before we leave. Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is review and approval of the PFAS Water Treatment Plant Design Amendment. And Kirsten Ryan from Kleinfelder, and Mike, Mr. Kuzinski, you'll both be giving us some details on what this is all about.
Evening, folks.
Thank you, Kirsten, for being here.
Hi, Kirsten.
Good evening.
Hi, today. Let me just, I have a few slides that I guess I should share via Zoom. That's what I was told to do.
Yep, you can share your screen. It should come up right up there.
I hope the Board has hard copies of the slides in front of you.
In case that doesn't work, but hopefully this will work. It did. How exciting.
There you go.
The magic of technology.
We're all very happy. Well, it was nice that Jim Donovan caught me outside and made sure my Wi-Fi was working, so that was nice of him. So, yes, so I thought it would be a good opportunity to give you all a good update. It's been a little while. We've been working very quickly, very hard, along with, you know, Jim and his staff support to get this project ready to bid, which it is almost ready to bid. It'll be advertised later this month and be bid during January. So that'll be, I think, a very good thing to get competitive bids in the door during the winter. So for anybody that may be catching this project, and they're new to town or new to the discussion, I just, you know, very quickly, do you guys mind if I take this down to speak?
No, please, take it off.
Okay, thank you. Just the purpose and benefit of this project and what it is all about. This is to restore a major water source in the town, drinking water source to service, and that is Wells 1 and 2 and the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant that serves them. So the new PFAS plant that we're designing will remove the contaminants to non-detectable levels. You always have to caveat that, just because it is based on current testing methods, and that will be essentially zero, but it's below 2 parts per trillion. That's the limit of the technology there. And this is required to meet new drinking water standards that were promulgated in October, last October, of 20 parts per trillion limit, very, very low amounts. So this will be the installation of carbon treatment vessels and a new building to house them. And it's a long-term investment in improving the town's water supply. And just to kind of walk people through how this all started, how it's going, where we're at. Starting in 2020, Millis has been very proactively engaged in this from the start and began sort of looking ahead. Before the regulation was promulgated, there was talk of it, and DEP was offering free testing. So Millis decided to take advantage of that and check the wells for PFAS chemicals. Initial test results were quite low, but then retesting in September showed Wells 1 and 2 above this limit. So they were taken offline immediately. And then, just a month later, that regulation was promulgated. So it's enforceable standard now. So Millis and we worked together to get some public information out there, set up their website, just make sure everybody knew what was going on, be very transparent about what the issue was, what people can do to help limit their risk and what Millis was doing about it. And then in December, we submitted a grant application to help fund preliminary design, which was successful. That takes us through 2020. Then in 2021, beginning in January, you know, we needed to submit our estimate for the remainder of design so that would be appropriated in May, town meeting. So before starting preliminary design, we needed to kind of estimate the effort to get to the end. Then in April, DEP grant award for preliminary design was announced, and we started right away. And in a very, you know, kind of compressed timeline, completed not only the piloting of the wells with the technology, treatment technology, which you see there, but also the preliminary design report. So that was between April and June. Got that done on time. Again, want to commend Jim's and the DPW for helping us with getting access to the.
Could you speak up just a little into the mic?
Sure, sure. And the access to infrastructure and things like that. Then we began the final design part of the project in July, and it's now essentially 95% complete. Our 90% submittals undergoing internal review. We're going to get that out to Jim to review later this week. We've got a CONCOM hearing going on right now that Jim is covering to get that approval in place. Planning board is next week. So we're really cruising along, and as I said before, on schedule for winter bidding and construction starting in March. So I think this is, this is a really good thing for Millis to be at the forefront of this, because if you read the news, you know that all the other water systems in the state have had to test. And if they waited until the last minute, they're just now finding out the problems that they have with PFAS, which many of them do, many do. Dozens of communities. So by kind of being at the front of the wave of this need, you guys will have a competitive bidding environment this winter, and you will have access, hopefully, to, you know, the supplies are going to get short, labor will be short. So I think this is, you know, setting you guys up for the best scenario, making the best of a worst scenario. So that's kind of where we're at. Just sort of typically, we'll do preliminary design, and the results from that are available to inform the budget for final design. In this case, we kind of had to, you know, estimate that well before beginning preliminary design. And then during the course of design during the fall, some unforeseen conditions emerged while we were doing some calculations and had to be incorporated into the design. So that's what I want to walk you through here and just explain the basis for the amendment request. Again, so some of the concepts and challenges. You can see the site here. We tried to do our best to make, take advantage of the existing infrastructure with the wells to the north there and the existing very small De Angelis Water Treatment Plant to the south. The, there really wasn't, we wanted to preserve traffic flow, not interfere with the other DPW complex operations and ongoing construction there. There is kind of limited space on flat ground, and really, the only suitable space was this location where the old garage, old storage garage is located, in the middle of the site there. So that's the space we're utilizing, repurposing to demolish that old building and place the new building in that space. And as a quick refresher, this is what the concept looks like. These big carbon vessels, they are what filters out the PFAS from the water. They're pretty large. It's an example of being installed elsewhere, and, you know, they'll need a fairly large building to house them. We also wanted to leave a little extra space in case needs increase in the future. You don't want to build something that's just barely right enough size and then find out that you need to add something else in the future, which typically does happen sometimes. So as I said, the solution, not a cost effective to renovate this old building, so that will be taken down. So when we started preliminary design, we didn't know if we were going to, where we were going to put the facility at that point. So what we had to do during final design was some testing of the materials to make sure we knew what was in there and what the contractors needed to do to safely get that material out of there and dispose properly. So those are some of the activities that we undertook, preparing specialized specifications for bidding and estimating those disposal costs. The much bigger challenge that we ran into was the soils underneath the site. So the sand and gravel aquifer that underlies the site, great for wells, they're very productive wells, very high-yielding wells, but they can have some challenges in terms of construction, constructability. So the building that houses the filter vessels also will have a foundation that is, it's not really deep, but it's fairly deep, and it houses a holding tank to contain the water that they wash the filters with on installation. So there was specialized foundation design, and basically what they found was, the geotechnical engineers found that the soils were loose and what they call liquefiable, potentially liquefiable. So that means there are some loose sand deposits underneath the groundwater table. And in order to avoid settlement of the building, if there was, you know, any tremors or any seismic event like that, needs ground improvements, what they call ground improvements. So this is, you know, it's fairly straightforward to construct, but it needs some specialized specifications, design. We had to tweak the design of the foundation a little bit. Here's just an example of what this looks like. These rammed aggregate piers is what we're proposing to use to stabilize the subsurface. And it's just a machine that vibrates a hole down into the ground, and then gravel is compacted in lifts as you go up. So that stabilizes that whole surface there. And they can do it pretty quickly. So it's a pretty elegant solution. Another, in relation to the liquefiable soils, we also took a closer look at slope stability. The area to the northwest of the proposed building is steeply sloped. You know, it's in that way. It's not, the slope is not eroding or anything like that. There is an existing retaining wall there. But once we found out that the ground soils were liquefiable, we wanted to take a closer look at that slope, too, to make sure that, you know, something wasn't going to fail and damage the building. So the rammed aggregate ground improvements that I just showed you, those are going to go up to that toll of slope, and that'll help with some of that. We also were able to determine that the slope is, that is all that's needed. We don't need to do any ground improvements on top of the slope because of the water table. We were able to verify the depth of the water table and make sure, and do our calculations, make sure that that was a good enough solution, so. So those activities that we undertook very recently this fall, those are really the basis of what goes into the design amendment request, the additional drilling. We had to do some drilling to go deeper, look a little deeper to see how deep those loose soils went, and the testing of that soil. Topographic survey on that slope adjacent to the proposed building, and then additional calculations and design to come up with the specifications that go into the bid package to make sure it's all constructed appropriately. And then, as I said, the building hazardous materials testing. So this is where we're at. We're working on completing the last permits. As I said, putting the project to advertise at the end of December and then bidding during January and start construction early in the spring, as early as weather permits. So at that point, that's, that's what I wanted to present and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Looks to me, Kirsten, that was quite clear, I think.
Okay.
I understand the basics of the liquefiable soils. Typically, I run into them with a combination of clay and some other things. But at any rate, what you're basically saying is you have to add a cost to what our original design was, which was, I believe, in the $5.6 million range. And what you're saying here, if I'm not mistaken, is you're looking for approximately, potentially $300,000 to put in the stabilization? Is that what we're looking at?
Right. Well, today, what I'm asking for is a design amendment for the effort to get it to this point. But as far as the construction bids, I mean, I think we'll see what the bids come in. We do have a contingency on that and we're hoping that'll fall into the contingency in a competitive bid environment, so.
But we could be at risk for up to $300,000, as I understand.
The ground improvements, yes, it was something on the order of that.
It could be.
Yes, yes.
So we have to move forward with that assumption.
Right, right.
So that it doesn't catch us unawares in the future.
Right.
So basically, we've moved from 5.6 where we have, we're looking pretty close to a $6 million project for Wells one and two.
I think, conservative, yes. Yeah, right.
But that's really what we have to look at and say.
Exactly.
We have to know we've got funding available for that. So basically, if we approve moving ahead, we have to take into account, that's what we're agreeing to as a town, is that it makes no sense to approve further refinement of the bid and so on without understanding, this is what I'll call the at-risk, meaning this is what the project could potentially cost us.
Right. So the only thing, as Kirsten mentioned, the only thing that's requested now is the $75,000 change order for the design. Beyond that, we really need to see how the bids come in and so much of that, as you know, will be dependent on the bid market at the time we go out. Hopefully, it won't be a worst-case scenario where we do have to look for additional construction funds. Hopefully, the contingency will cover that. But certainly, this is a new development as far as from what the original estimate of 5.6 million came in.
Now, $75,000 you're looking for, what does that entail when you say new design? What, that's, that's an expensive design. Give us some idea.
That's, that is for our time that we have expended getting that design completed. So that was, you know, just over the course of the fall, doing those additional analyses. That's a climb filter effort and, and subconsultants. So we had a drilling contractor had to mobilize. So, you know, this is something where, you know, I kept Jim in the loop during this process.
We're just trying to make sure we understand what the costs were and are associated with this, so.
Yep. Yeah, no, no problem. It's, you know, labor plus subconsultants' time.
Getting people in, doing the testing.
Yep.
Putting the specs together.
Exactly.
And getting everything out there, reviewing it and so on.
And keeping the issue of time and urgency at the forefront of moving this forward, yes.
Yeah, here's that side.
All of this, I'm assuming, has been reviewed with our DPW director.
Yes, absolutely.
He's definitely in the loop and understands exactly what's going on.
He understands, he's on board. I've had discussions with him. He's fully supportive of the amendment, as am I. Mr. McKay is, as mentioned, he's down at a CONCOM meeting on the project right now. It just so happened that the meeting's conflicted in time. But I can, I can certify that he is, he is supportive of this.
Excellent. I will, Ms. Underhill, please.
I, I do have a question. So in the typical process that you guys would be following in general, would that have, did that include the drilling? Like, is that, all of that something you do anyway? Or was this done because something else tipped you off that there might be a problem?
So we did do some geotechnical drilling during preliminary design and we didn't include the detailed design calculations at that point. When we got into the detailed part of the design and started looking at how the foundation needed to go and looking back, doing the geotechnical calculations, that's when then we realized, hmm, you know, we would like to drill a little deeper and see if we can find where the bottom of this sand layer is. So it was something that didn't emerge during, until the final design process. You know what I'm saying?
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments from the audience, anyone? Okay. So basically, as I understand it, what are we looking for? Approval of this, but you're not asking at this time for any additional funding? You're just looking to approve?
No, I mean, we're asking for approval of an amendment to our agreement, our engineering services agreement.
In the amount of?
Of $75,000.
Of $75,000.
That's it.
I just want to make absolutely certain.
Right. No requests at this point, as far as any construction costs, because we don't, we're not sure of those yet.
Okay.
Okay. So I move that we approve the change order request number two in the amount of $75,000
For the?
For the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant PFAS final design.
And for the town administrator to sign on the board's behalf.
And for the town administrator to sign on the board's behalf.
It's, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to request approval of the $75,000 for the change order request number two for the PFAS plant, plan for Wells one and two. And if approved, to allow the town administrator to sign that amendment.
Thank you.
This is seconded. We need to vote on that.
Aye.
I'll vote aye.
Aye.
It's been voted and moved unanimously that we will approve this contract accordingly, this amendment to the contract. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Ah, Mr. McKay, before you leave, is there anything you'd like to advise us of or anything? We just approved the change order.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the board for approving the change order. We're still working with the Conservation Commission downstairs and I'm going to take Kirsten downstairs to hopefully get that approval this evening. We do have a little report that pretty much will update. I think Kirsten gave the idea where we're moving next would be to put it out to bid as soon as possible. But I think we're moving in the right direction. We have a few things downstairs that we have to take care of and I'm sure I'll be back. I think I have to see you in about 20 minutes.
Great. I do have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
I know I've asked it before. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Nope.
Is there any way to retest Wells one and two? They were taken offline some time ago. We now use two different testing labs, if I'm not mistaken. Can we get Wells one and two retested or is that a major problem?
It would be more, now, it would be a major problem because it's been offline so long because we'd have to waste, would have to take so much water to waste it. And we'd have to get approval from the DEP to do that. So we'd have to run well one and two for, what, last time, didn't we run it for like a week?
We did the piloting in, in...
In March, wasn't it?
May.
May, yeah.
In May. So there's test results from May. They were still higher, like, they were like 30, 25, 30.
See, the idea of if well one right now is still, it's still below the 21 pots per trillion? The 20 pots per trillion?
It wasn't during piloting, it was, it was above.
It was higher, yeah. I can get you the test results for the ones that were in May, but I was going to do that Wednesday night. I was going to give you those and...
No, I was just wondering if there's any chance we have, things have changed enough that we could bring them back online. This is not to suggest we aren't going to move forward with the filtration. We know we need to do that, but we're just limited right now with those two because they were major wells for the town. And I was hoping there might be a way that if they tested better, we could at least have them in reserve if nothing else, so.
Well, I will say that, I mean, you do have pretty good redundancy on your supply, so, you know, knock with the other sources.
Well, and that's the concern I have. It doesn't take much more to cause us a problem, so that's it. But if we're dealing with a situation...
Ms. Janey, I totally agree with you. I think that you're in the right, you're on the right track of what the perfect storm could happen without Wells one and two.
Right.
And I think we've shared that with the board in the past couple of months of water main breaks here and there and these fluky things happening.
Yep.
Where do they come from? Why do they happen? They never happen until we have well one and two offline. So it, it's, it's some of the things I just can't explain. It's like why the, you know, one day we're running and we have a water main break and the computer system goes down because the tank's offline and, you know, the signaling system's not working. I just, it's...
Look, we're in a situation where we're working on the extremes at this point, is the problem.
Right.
And things break when you're working on the extremes. That's why I was just hoping there might be a way. But if you're telling me we have to dump water for a week, that's quite unsatisfactory and there's no other option, then we have to leave it as it is. But I was hoping there might be an option. Assuming everything goes well, how soon could you think we might be able to get a plant built for this filtration?
I, I think it's going to be a year from start.
Okay. So we have to live in this never world for another year.
Another year.
Okay? Any other questions?
No questions.
Okay.
I'll be back for paving later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So much for that. The next item on the agenda is Stormwater and Land Disturbance Hearing, Lot 19 Evergreen Terrace and Lot 20A Beach Street. And we're going to have Dan Marican and, is it Mary Rico's? I can't remember and I apologize.
Melissa's?
Melissa.
I apologize. I'm Caitlin.
Okay.
I'm feeling it, Melissa.
That's fine.
She's coming in from Minnesota. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Marican.
Good evening. Dan Marican with Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. I'll share my screen here for you. This is a land disturbance permit, stormwater permit for basically the last two lots in South End Farm, all the other lots.
You have to vote to open the hearing.
Oh.
I move that we open the hearing.
I'll second that. All in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Honestly, we are now in the middle of a hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. I forgot it was...
We're here to keep you guys in line, don't worry.
Well, I forgot it was a hearing, of course. I read it.
So this, this subdivision was approved back in 2004, 2005. It has a comprehensive stormwater management system that's already constructed and fully operational. The way the original permits were set up was that we'd come in on each lot just to kind of confirm that our design assumptions were met and that each lot is being developed as originally conceived of. So this, these are the last two lots in that process. Lots 19 and 20. Lots 19 and 20 are located on the corner of Evergreen Terrace and Beach Street. This is the old homestead. Hunter Rosenfeld lived here, the Rosenfeld family lived here. The home was recently demolished and the land was, as originally planned, chopped into two lots. So we submitted a package to you, basically Lot 19, which is 10 Evergreen, has a house that will face Evergreen. In every one of these lots in this subdivision, we have a natural preservation area, which is 30% of the lot area, which is an area that won't be landscaped. And it's basically intent is to reduce landscape chemicals. And on Lot 20, which is the next lot over, we have the same thing where we have a proposed home, a proposed septic system, a driveway coming in. This is number two Beach Street. And then in the back of the property will be a natural preservation area. And that's set off with bounds that are monuments so that people can see the limits of where they're supposed to stop landscaping. We provided a submission package, which Beta has reviewed. In it, we basically went back through the whole subdivision, checked as well conditions based on record information that we have and aerial photography and confirmed that there's an acre and a quarter less impervious coverage in the subdivision than we had originally intended, which means that our drainage systems are overdesigned for the subdivision. So I have provided you with some draft decisions, which are basically identical to the prior decisions. I don't think, I'm not sure if either one of you have sat on one of these. The last time we were here was 2018. But the draft decisions that I've given you for the two lots are basically have the exact same conditions of approval as the last batch of lots that we did in 2018, which were the lots that are being developed now on Frontier Lane. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any at this moment, Ms. Underhill.
I, it seems pretty straightforward to me. I don't have any questions.
I went through as much as I could of the documentation, but I've seen...
Thrilling stuff, isn't it?
Not, no. I tell you, it cured insomnia.
Yes, I know.
No, it's just, you know, I have to take your word for what you've said and it looks reasonable and I know we had, it was approved previously.
Right. And you could take his word and we could hear from the representative of Beta.
I was going to say, we have period of review here, so...
Having said that, I am going to ask, oops, excuse me, the representative from Beta to please come up and give us your thoughts on this.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Caitlin, from Beta.
You can move your chair over if you prefer, just so. We're trying to keep distancing Dan.
Socially distanced, yes.
Please understand.
We reviewed it. We had just a couple of comments, which were addressed fully. So plans look good to us. They look consistent with the other past approved plans in the lots. So overall, we don't have any concerns.
So from your perspective, they've met the conditions?
Yes.
Or exceeded?
Right.
And overall, it's something that you don't see any problem for us proceeding and saying, we authorize it, move forward.
Right.
Yeah, I think one of the key things that was pointed out was the delineation of where the landscaping would end. And I see that that was now included, so.
They asked us to add more to this plan you're seeing on the screen. They asked us to add a couple more bounds, which we did here on the side, just so that people understand that the natural preservation area wraps around.
Okay.
This little strip is vacant because there's a water service that runs from Beach Street to the home behind the subdivision, the Andre property, which is not part of the subdivision, but there's about 10 foot of water reason there.
This was the first time I'd seen these particular layouts, so that's, maybe they were in here, but I just didn't see them grayed out in this manner, so.
Yeah, they were there before. It was just that a couple of...
I'm sure they were. I just overlooked them each time. So, okay, I'll take a motion to approve this.
I...
Hi, could I, could I ask a question?
You, I'm sorry, you have someone on the floor who'd like to speak? Sorry about that.
Yeah, hi, no, no problem. Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Rich Murray. Yeah, and I, I'm a new homeowner in the region. I'm right, on the map you're looking right now, it says Franco DeSantis. That, that home there, I just bought recently, so I'm kind of, you know, new to the neighborhood, new to, that's right, right there. You know, new to all this. You know, I just wanted, I got a notice through Facebook that this was happening and I just wanted to ensure, and Dan, you and I had spoken a while back before I bought this home, actually.
I remember.
And, yeah, yeah, thank you, by the way. And I just wanted to kind of check in about the, kind of the water and the water, the implication of the water and the drainage, because I'm downstream of all this. And so I just want to make sure that that was kind of part of the planning and I shouldn't be, you know, preparing for a new tidal wave or anything along those lines.
No, it was, it's part of the original design. So the water that comes off of these two lots goes in two different directions. They go into the catch basins in Beach Street and Evergreen Terrace. There's a stormwater basin on Evergreen Terrace. Hang on a second. There's a stormwater basin back here on Evergreen Terrace. Picks up runoff from Evergreen Terrace. So all the runoff coming off of Lot 20 would go in that direction. Then that discharges out to the east. And then for Lot 19, which is across the street from you, the water runs out into the street, gets picked up by the catch basins. And then down the road here are a couple of stormwater basins down in here.
Okay. So you wouldn't anticipate, you know, this, this change, kind of moving water just immediately, you know, through the, through the properties across the street?
No, the road is crowned so that the water from one side doesn't travel to the other side.
Okay. Great, great. Okay, hey, thank you. Just wanted to check in on that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else out there who would like to talk with us? Okay, hearing, no further comments? Then have we closed?
I move that we close the hearing.
I'll second that. Vote on that.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing is now closed. And now I'll take a motion to approve the changes.
I move that we approve the stormwa, the application for stormwater management and land disturbance permits for South End Farm subdivision lots 19 Evergreen Terrace and 20A Beach Street.
With the conditions in the draft.
With the conditions in the outline.
Okay, thank you. With the conditions in the outline.
Do you have the draft motion?
This is the decision.
Oh, no.
Hold on.
Nope.
Here, Aaron.
Never mind.
Read right through that.
Hold on.
It'll help you out.
Thank you.
All right, hold on.
Okay. Thank you. All right, hold on. Uh, okay, I move that we grant a stormwater management permit and a land disturbance permit for ten Evergreen Terrace, based on the findings identified in the draft decisions dated December second, two thousand and twenty-one, and subject to the conditions enumerated therein. And then-
Two motions, because you're issuing two permits just for clean record keeping at the registry. We're gonna record a decision for each lot.
Okay, so that's one motion. I have to make that one up.
That's one motion, and I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Uh, vote on it? I, uh, I vote yes.
Aye, yes.
Okay, so that portion carries.
Okay, so then I move to grant a stormwater management permit and a land disturbance permit for Two Beach Street, based on the findings identified in the draft decisions dated December second, two thousand and twenty-one, and subject to the conditions enumerated therein.
Second. Move and seconded. Any further comments? None? Uh, uh, Mr. Tremaine, yes?
Aye.
And you, it's so hard getting out of the online where we have to poll the board, so I apologize. Okay. Both have carried. Both have been passed.
Thanks for your time.
You can move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming up.
Okay. Oh, yes.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Okay, next item on the agenda.
I did skim by that.
Open session items, review contract and amend, uh, contract amendments for annual paving. I don't see-
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would probably ask that we skip that for now and come back.
I will text Jim in the meantime.
Yep, that's fine. He just said he would be up here. And let me just go over the approval of the letter to Senator Roush for aid, just so that you're aware of this, I believe, Erin, because you did sign it. But for everyone else, it's on record. We did send a letter to Senator Roush thanking her for a hundred thousand dollars toward PFAS mitigation for the town, but also making her aware that what we're facing as a town is approximately a twenty-three million dollar cost to put in mitigation facilities. And anything more that she could do to help us get as much of that twenty-three million from the over five billion dollars in ARPA funds that have been allocated to the state would be very much appreciated. So that was the gist of our letter. We've also talked with, I personally have talked with both Representatives Linsky and Dooley on this issue. So they're very much aware of our concern and are also going to do what they can to try to get us what funding they can. I will finally say that I've been working all of this with Mr. Gazinski, who has been anything but a silent partner in all of this, but we are trying to keep our reps involved, trying to get them to work with us, and working very hard to try to get whatever funding we can to help us with the mitigation facilities that we are putting in. Are there any other comments? Any comments from the audience or anyone? Okay.
I, I move that we approve the letter to Senator Roush regarding the PFAS grant aid.
I'll second that. It's moved and seconded to approve the letter to Roush, Senator Roush, and, um, I'll vote, I'll ask the board to vote on it?
Aye.
Aye. So motion carries unanimously. Okay. So much for that. Approval of the letter, approval of water, stormwater department, water sewer department commitments.
It's Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to request that the board approve the water and sewer commitment to the collector for November of two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and two cents.
Move, okay.
I move that we approve the commitment for water, sewer department to the collector for November two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of one thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and two cents.
I second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the water sewer commitment for November two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and two cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so I think we have one item left, and that's the paving contract amendments, and we need to wait for Mr. McKay.
I did send him a text. Hopefully he is on his way up. I can call him in a minute if he does not.
That would be great.
I do have minutes for you, but I never emailed them to today.
That's correct.
They are fine. So I will send those, and we'll have them for when, the next meeting anyway.
That's fine.
I was gonna ask that. I do. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll put the draft ones online. I'm sorry, I just did not get around to emailing them, but they are ready. From the very last meeting, eleven, what was it, eleven twenty-two? Mm-hmm. So, let me try actually calling Mr. McKay.
We're gonna lose most of our audience pretty soon, because the Patriots game is going to start in about fifteen minutes.
Who, who are the Patriots?
Yeah. I haven't heard of them. That's funny.
How can they rate anywhere after we've had our own soccer team?
Although I will point out that, you know, it's barely eight o'clock, and we are just about through the agenda. So I'd say that's a pretty good success.
Okay, and just so everybody's aware, coming up in January, I figure, hey, I can mention this, we are going to ask our National Merit Scholarship finalists to attend our meeting at that time and congratulate them on their wonderful standing at that point. So that would be around the twenty-something?
Twenty-fourth, I believe.
Twenty-fourth of January. So hopefully, everybody will tune in at that time, and will have an opportunity to congratulate them on the superb job they did.
While we're saying nice things, I will also congratulate the Rec Department for a great event this weekend.
Oh, great.
The Santa Parade was excellent and well organized, and there was hot chocolate and cookies and-
And for those that aren't aware, it's the Fire Department that actually puts up all our lights out front.
Yes.
Uh, and it's the first time we've had a menorah up front, which, that's not the Fire Department. That's actually separate, but that's been lovely to have. The, the Fire Department did a great job of getting the lights up, and it looks fantastic, so they do work well together.
Excellent job.
Now, we have our DPW-
I'll be calling you. I'm like, we'll find Jim. We're, we're at the end of the meeting.
So we may need that Fire Department here soon.
We're going to go through a review and approval of the contract amendments for the fiscal year twenty-two annual paving. So, Mr. McKay, our DPW director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board. So we'd like to ask for two contract amendment. One is for the FY twenty-two annual paving contract with T. Mayozy Incorporated of eighty Compass Circle, North Kingston, Rhode Island. The original contract was in the amount of four hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. That included our paving of all our roads that we, that we did with Chapter ninety funding, and for the first time, we added in the DPW parking lot for the binder coat. And you'd proved that contract for four hundred and fourteen, one oh nine. The Permanent Building Committee approved-
Excuse me.
The payment, and they actually, we increased the, the base coat by a half inch throughout the entire parking lot. And that was approved by the committee because of the, the idea of trucks driving on it, buses, fire trucks and all that. So we actually added on a inch on this end and on the top coat, which that won't be going out till the next twenty-three annual paving contract. So that did add almost to the penny, the twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two fifty-eight for that inch of parking lot. The Permanent Building Committee did approve this pending your approval of the amended contract. They can, they can approve the, the payment, because it is coming out of the DPW funds. It's not coming out of town funds or the Chapter ninety funding. This is coming directly out of the DPW funds, and there are the funds to do that. So the new contract amount will be four hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one fifty-eight.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is you added the extra half inch both sides so it'll stand up under the wear and tear of heavy vehicles going over it.
That parking area will last a lot longer with that, with that extra asphalt on it.
Right, so, okay, and that's basically all there is to it. I mean, I'll ask if there are any other comments from the board and the audience? Okay, I will say that the project appears to have been managed very well thus far. So I personally don't have any particular problem with it, and so I'll congratulate you on that and the PBC-
Absolutely.
-at the same time. So I'll take a motion to approve the amount of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents additional to the contract.
I move that we approve the contract amendments for the fiscal year twenty-two annual paving. The amendment amount is twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents, which will bring the new contract amount to four hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents.
If you want to authorize the town administrator to execute it on your behalf.
And authorize the town administrator to execute the contract on our behalf.
Now, I have only one, one comment before I say that. I have four hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, not five hundred and thirty-one.
I have two.
Yeah, they, they, they added that extra twenty-one, the, the twenty-one dollars in there. So maybe, I, 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 if you could add that to make it the fifty-one dollars. All right, five hundred and fifty-one fifty-eight.
So wait a minute, so it's four thirty-six, five five, one five eight, right?
Yes, right.
Okay. All right, what?
I just didn't want any-
I think it's a type on one of the documents.
It's on this one, Erin, if you have the letter.
Since it's typed in there, I think that's what we should approve.
Absolutely.
It's a small enough-
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, that's okay. It's just, I just don't want an inconsistency that comes back to haunt us.
Sure.
So.
As amended.
Fine, and so I'll say second. So I'm gonna ask for a vote to approve the new contract in the amount of four hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, which is an additional twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents over the original contract. I vote aye?
Yes, aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the second one, Mr. Chair, is for the FY twenty-two annual paving contract two. Now, if you remember, this was, we put out in, I think it was September, October, and these were funds that came from the town meeting vote in May, and that gave us the, the ability to pave Spring Street. And in the meantime, when we put the bid out, it was just for straight paving of a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. That was what the bid was awarded to La Russo Corporation of three twenty South Street in Plainville, Mass. And during that time, the police chief had requested that we install speed bumps on Spring Street. Whether we like them or we don't, that's not for us to make that decision. They're in. Now we have to pay for them. So the actual paving, because of the elimination of the sections, it, it did come in a little lower. The actual speed bumps cost, cost thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, and that left a deficit in what was awarded of six thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Again, there is enough funds in that contract amount from the town meeting, so we're not looking for any funds to come anyplace else other than the approved town meeting vote.
Excellent. Any final questions?
I will say that I'm very, very pleased with the speed bumps. I think it was in, I'm sure there's many other places that would benefit from that, but that's a really excellent choice because I wouldn't walk it, but for those that do walk it, it's pretty treacherous. So it'd be nice to avoid an accident. So, yes.
I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the contract amendment for the annual paving contract number two. The contract amendment amount, six thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a new contract amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars.
It's moved, uh, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract amount for fiscal year annual, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two annual paving contract number two, changing it from a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars with an additional six thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars to a total of one hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, none? Motion carries unanimously. Looks fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
At this, go ahead.
I, oh, no, you just have to say that. Never mind. I was gonna make a motion for you, but I don't think I have to. Go ahead.
We are now getting ready to adjourn to executive session. I want to thank everyone for having joined us this evening. Very happy to have had you. In our executive session, we are going to conduct a strategy session in preparation for union and non-union personnel for the police chief and Massachusetts Coalition of Police, one seventy, local one seventy-one, and Milis Police Association dispatchers. We will adjourn from that meeting, come back, and then close this meeting. So.
And roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
Oh, yes, aye.
So, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Tremaine, yes? We are now adjourning to that meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.